The zoning board of appeals, would you please rise for the pledge? Okay, welcome to our meeting on such a dreary day. For the record, one of our regular members, Larry Sloman, was unable to attend. And in his place, our alternate, Phyllis Capone, will be a voting member for the entire meeting. For those of you that are new to the procedures of the ZBA, the meeting is divided into two halves. During the first half, we'll hear, we have public hearings on each of the applications that have been submitted. We will take these in the order in which they're listed on the agenda. For each application, we'll ask the applicants to come forward to state their names for the record and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. We'll ask the applicant to give a very brief description of what the case is about. And then individual members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions, gather further information. Once all of the members have had an opportunity to ask questions, the floor will be open to members of the audience and to speak on that application, but that application only. For each, each member of the public that wishes to speak, we'll ask them to come forward, again, state their name and be sworn in, because all testimony has to be sworn. But just so that there's no confusion, let me just read from our bylaws. For those who wish to speak concerning any application on the agenda, when you come to the podium, we ask that you state your name and address and be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA is sworn testimony. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes per speaker. In addition, if you share the concerns of a previous speaker, you do not need to repeat the statements, but may simply state that you share those concerns. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, the zoning board will listen to and consider any comments made, but will not respond to them during the meeting. Any question should be directed to the board and not to the applicant. As with comments, the board will listen to the questions, but will not answer them this evening. Also, please note that written statements are welcome prior to the closing of the public hearing. So once we've heard from every member of the public that wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next application. When we've heard all of the, or we've finished all of the public hearings, we'll then enter into the deliberation phase of the meeting. During this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public, but you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. Okay. For tonight's meeting, we've, we've had a request to take an item out of order. And so I move that the board allow the presentation of item number four to be first. My understanding is that the professionals representing the applicant have another meeting later on this evening, and so to accommodate them, I would ask that the board approve this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so item number four.
I actually was just gonna say, my meeting in New York, it's actually just got canceled. So if you want it going on, that's fine. I'll be happy to.
You're, you're sitting there, we might as well go ahead.
No, why don't you go to number one? Why don't you go to the first one?
Well, they're here.
Oh, so are they.
Number one is here also.
This is number one.
Oh, you guys are number one?
Yes.
Oh, all right, that's, okay, then ignore the previous motion. Okay, all right. Item number one, South Road crossings, this is at two, 2611, 2629 South Road. So you were here last meeting, so you've already been sworn, so you can just proceed with the presentation.
You gonna build that?
I don't know.
You gonna build that?
What?
You gonna build that? I like that. Back up.
You actually like that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'll just take a minute and one minute, it'll come on.
Here we go. Yep. So we were here last month.
Pull your microphone down. Thanks.
Sorry. We were here last month, and as I noted, we had several variances before you before. The board was kind enough to work through the first three. The last four through seven, which were the size of the signs on the south and north side of the building, was requested that we went and worked with our tenants and see what we can do. I can turn this over to Joe. But we, we've worked diligently trying to get our tenants to sign off on, on the square footages. And basically, what we've been able to get them to agree to is 75 square feet on the south and north of, of the building's sides. So what I have before and in your packets there is a representation of the allowable signage in the front and 75 square feet on the north and south sides of building one on the right, building two is on the left. And then these are obviously views as we had last month from, on Route nine, looking north. This is building two, which would be the 75 square feet on the side facing south and 99 on the side facing Route nine. And then this is building two, or excuse me, that was building two, this is building one, with 75 on the south and 99 in the front. And then this is coming from the north, looking south, and again, showing both the signage, 99 on the north sides of the building and, or 75 on the north side of the building and 99 on the Route nine side. So that's really where we are, based on our, our last meeting.
Okay, so, so the application before us now is for, for wall signs.
Correct.
On the north and south buildings, one and two.
Correct.
So that, so for those two buildings, each building would have three wall signs. One facing Route nine.
Correct.
By right, up to 100 square feet.
Correct.
And so now, we're, we're looking at four additional wall signs.
Correct, so each tenant would, because each building is split in two, each tenant would have two signs.
Okay. So I, I guess I'd like to hear you, once again, explain why we need so many signs.
Well, as, as we talked last time, visibility off the road is critical for the tenants, as well as their branding is critical for the tenants. And we were directed to go back and reduce, we went back and got aggressive with the tenant, the one particular on the south end of the south building, who's been the most prickly. And we're, and we were able to get them to reduce the signage to 75 feet, even though we tried for more on the south side. They, they feel it's critical to have visibility in both directions for traffic, particularly at the intersections, as cars are moving north and south on the highway. Typically, you're not gonna see that much of the sign as you're right by it, because you're driving by, you don't look, you know, over your left shoulder, right shoulder.
Okay.
And again, coming north here, there is no light into our plaza, so the only way to see the real signage is it's a small monument sign that is at the entrance, and they're all having smaller panels, that, the only way to really know where that destination is, is to be able to have that signage on the buildings.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
So just to clarify, the front sign would be 99 square feet and the, and the one on the side you're proposing to be 75?
Yes.
That's all, thank you.
I seem to remember from last month, we had some conversations about the landscaping along the, the border there.
Up front.
Right.
Yes, there was some discussion about trying to take down trees.
And, and where is, where does that stand?
We, we have not gotten, I mean, we were approved with our landscaping that was in already from the planning board. We'd have to go back and talk to them about taking trees down and for signing off.
That's the biggest impediment to the visibility of the storefronts, right?
I will say that the planning board, when we, when they looked at the landscaping, liked the preservation of those trees that are in the front. There's some somewhat mature trees there, and they were fond of the idea of keeping some of those, so.
The, the trees that are also there are the ones in the state median as well, but there are trees right there that we've been asked to preserve, as Michael pointed out.
All right, that's all.
All right. No, Christine had my question. What, what was this, what were the south and the north sides again? Just refresh my, 99, they were all 99?
They were, yes.
We were requesting 100, 99. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to remind everybody that the county in its review has recommended that the four variances that cover the four additional wall signs, they've, they've recommended that that be denied. So in order to approve this, we have to have a, a super majority. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Tony?
I have no questions.
James?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions at this point.
Okay.
I have one more, I'm sorry. Yeah, excuse me. The lighting on these signs is gonna be, what, LED or backlit? What, what are we looking at?
Internally illuminated.
Each, each letter is gonna have its own illumination?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things too is that with the planning board, we've agreed to work on a sloped roof look, so that facade above the retail sign too, it's, the sign looks big in that rendering because it's right up on, there's gonna be a sloped roof on that.
Instead of the flat?
Yeah, instead of flat, because they wanted to have sloped roofs there, so it's gonna, the perspective will be a little different.
Here.
Yeah. Those will be sloped. So there'll be more space above the signage.
So this is sloping up.
And at this point, you don't know what, you, you, or you either don't know or you can't reveal what the signs will look like.
Right.
I mean, what you've got are just big block letters.
Correct, we have a couple of tenants that we can't reveal yet.
Okay. All right.
Jim? Yeah. Could you just refresh my memory as to why you really need those extra signs with, whether it's going north or south, the traffic is gonna see the hundreds, the 99 square foot sign on the front of the building. So I'm still, I, I know it's, I just need to be refreshed as to why those additional signs are important.
So as you're heading north here, you can see this section of, oops, sorry. Trying to get my highlighter to work, sorry.
It's okay.
See, always a technical difference. Joe asked me if I wasn't gonna have one today, and I said I wasn't. So, you know, as you're heading north, you can see the, the main focus here, I mean, you have a gas station that's impeding, impeding the visual on this building here for a portion of it. But, so, to get as much visibility to knowing ahead of time, because you have to now get to the left lane, then get up to the next light and turn around and make a U-turn, heading in the northbound direction. So to be able to see this, you're at an angle where you see both right here in front of it, but as you're progressing along, as you see coming from the south, you're gonna see these, and this is a tree here, you know, this is hidden by currently what is existing is the coyote grill, but we don't know what's gonna happen with that. So if it actually does come down, it helps improve our visibility, depending on what they do with the building, because currently it is in the setback, in the front of the, front yard setback, so it would have to be moved backwards. So it'd help get visibility to that side again, so you're, if you're in the left lane, knowing where to pull over, the minute you can see the north face of those buildings to help get you to that right lane.
But there's quite a bit of distance from where your plaza is to where you have to go up to Locust Grove to pull the U-turn.
Correct.
And you really, it's the sign on Route nine that's gonna catch your eye.
But you don't, as Joe pointed out, that sign is really almost visible when you're next to it.
But I still gotta go all the way up to Locust Grove if I'm going north to flip around.
Understood, but when you're doing 45, well, what is supposed to be 45 or 40 miles an hour in that zone, you're gonna have a hard time seeing it right here at a peripheral if you're in the left or middle or right lane, driving northbound, where as you're coming up to it, when you start to see, it's forward in your peripheral rather than right here in your peripheral.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application, South Road crossings at 2611, 2629 South Road?
I apologize, I do have a question.
Oh, sure.
Do you know the square footage of the face of the building?
It exceeds the, the requirement for the 100. We could build a bigger sign, but I know when we did the calculations, 100 is the max, the 99 is the max, based off of the square footage. So if you did the, I forget what the calculation exactly is.
It's limited to 25 percent.
Right, so it's exceed, it would, it would exceed the 100 if we actually did the calculation off the front of the building, when we did the math, if I remember correctly.
More, more than 400 square feet.
The, the faces, if I remember correctly, I'd have to go back and, to be 100 percent.
What are you counting as the face of the, are you counting the whole?
Yes, we were, I was, I was trying to find, go back to.
Yeah, that's more than, it's clearly more than 400.
So the building, I'll get into the architect, the. Doesn't have the full length.
So you're using the whole side of the whole building?
Yes.
All right, okay.
The whole side of the building.
Okay. No one from the audience has indicated they wish to address this. If there are no other questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, Frank Orlando, 99 Ray Boulevard.
Good evening.
And your name, sir?
Frank V. Orlando Jr.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's concerned a carport.
Yes, it does, on my father's property, who has since deceased. According to assessor's records, it was built in 1955. I know it was built by the neighbor, even though I wasn't around at that point in time, next to his property.
Okay. All right, Christine?
So is the replacement carport going to be exactly where the current one is?
No, I'm not replacing it. A permit was never taken out for the original carport. I'm just looking to get the CFO, which I need to get a variance because of the lot line.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I missed when you thought the carport was built?
According to assessor's records, 1955.
Okay.
All right.
So again, just to clarify, what we see there now is what's gonna be there after this is done, until the house is sold or whatever?
Yes, the only difference is the building inspector wanted two additional posts, which I'm hoping are almost up to support.
You're just, you're just gonna legitimize this, so you have to sell the house?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Somehow the application got misinterpreted, we, we're reading this as if you're replacing it.
Oh, okay, no.
No, okay, okay.
I'm just legitimizing what's there, as he said, yeah.
Okay. All right, Tony?
No questions.
James?
No questions.
Phyllis?
And the building inspector was out and inspected the carport and sound?
Yes, he, he wanted to see two additional posts along the outside, which may be there, I'm hoping. But, yeah, the origin, the, the permit for the house in 1954 was never closed, so I had, have a couple little things done to the house as well for the inspectors, but yeah.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 99 Ray Boulevard? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you very much.
So just to be clear, you'll, you'll discuss this later in the evening?
Yes. And you can go home, call the zoning office tomorrow morning, and they'll give you the results.
Okay, great, yeah, because I think I made another.
Yeah, you can actually watch it on TV.
You've got bios, you can watch this, yes.
That'll, that'll make three of you that'll be watching.
Exactly.
You have to be in the town if you can see, to see that?
Have to have the rights.
Yeah, yeah, I would, you know, we're, we're not doing real well in the Albany market and.
Well, I live in Red.
They haven't picked us up yet.
Red, I'm sorry, you won't get it.
I'll, I'll give a call tomorrow morning, thank you very much.
All right, good night. Okay, item number three, Michael Novradsky?
Yep, that's me.
Nine Street.
Nine Street Avenue, correct.
Okay.
So do you swear or affirm the testimony you provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Do you mind removing your hat? Thank you.
Little hat head, don't mind the hat head. What's that?
Okay, you wanna just?
The reason why I wanna make a basement apartment is for, my 82-year-old mother lives in Buchanan, and she's getting elderly, and she lives alone, and basically, she keeps falling, she wound up in the emergency room on Saturday, and hit her head on the radiator, and she has nobody basically to watch her, and I wanna make a basement apartment, a small basement apartment, one bedroom, and I wanna move her into my house. And that's the reason why I wanna make a basement apartment at Nine Street Avenue.
Okay.
Okay.
Christine?
No questions.
Paul?
The house now, is the basement finished?
The basement's not finished.
So do you know the square footage of the, it's one floor?
Correct.
Okay. The partial access says like 1,200 and some?
Yeah, something like that, 1,200, and all I'm adding is one little bedroom, a kitchenette, a bathroom I wanted, and a living room.
You know the square footage of the apartment that you wanna build?
Offhand, I don't have the square footage, but I know that the livable space is probably gonna be maybe 35 percent, maybe livable space or something like that.
That's amazing that you could come up with that number.
You like that, right? The livable space to get it in, because all this utility room, where the oil tank is, the storage, the hallway underneath the stairs, it's not livable space.
Tell me this, the blueprint that you provided, that foundation, is that the same as the upstairs?
Correct.
Yeah, so I did a little digging into this, because we were running into the same problem, trying to figure out what the square footages were. According to partial access, the first floor square footage is 1,072 square feet. And so if I, thinking that the basement, as you just asked, is the same size, it's apparently a full basement, that would also be 1,072, so that's 2,144 square feet.
See, I don't, I don't read that as, that's what the code says. It says existing floor space, 35 percent of the existing floor space.
Existing floor space. I asked, I'd asked the zoning administrator about it, he thought the basement would be included.
I think it would be if that was.
If it was finished?
Yes, and included in the taxed floor space.
In the taxed floor space, right, right. And then the upstairs, the second floor is, is, it appears that it's unfinished, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so that doesn't count either.
That's my, that's how I believe we've interpreted it in the past.
So then you would have, if it, at 1,072, that was the entirety of the.
So you're looking at 350 some.
Right, which is smaller than what the code allows, too.
Right.
I looked at, there's a definition, oh, go ahead, why didn't you ask, I'm gonna, I wanna look up the definition of floor area, because that's what I was looking at with Tom, I checked this afternoon.
Yeah, I had raised this last week, and Mike checked with the building department. It wasn't clear to me, first of all, the second story, whether it was finished or unfinished. And it was also not clear to me how much of the existing basement could be considered livable floor area. Because it's, it's on a grade, so the front part of the basement is below grade, the back part is, is above grade, in fact, the entrance to the apartment is, what, pretty much at grade on the.
Correct, you're gonna walk, you have to walk downstairs. I have almost, I think it's nine and a half, almost 10 feet in the basement to look up. It's not your average basement, it's like whoever built the house in 1951 must have been a mason, and it's all block all the way off. So I have almost 10-foot basement ceilings for a basement, it's weird. It's great, but it's weird that it's that high, but that's what I have, right.
So this is, and, and again, I'm just doing this together with you, but the, so the code refers specifically to, the language is, is follows, the floor area devoted to the apartment shall not exceed 35 percent of the existing floor area of the one family dwelling. And floor area residential, in the code, I just had it a minute ago, I lost it, sorry, bear with me. Floor area residential, as used herein, shall mean, A, for purposes of this definition, floor areas shall include, one, basement space, two, elevator shafts and stairwells at each floor, penthouses, attic space, whether or not the floor has actually been laid, providing structural headroom of at least seven feet six inches, interior balconies and mezzanines, enclosed porches, bathrooms, closets, hallways, and similar spaces.
All right.
So again, that was a conversation, we, we, we had asked for this information, and it's through phone calls, we didn't, we didn't have a chance to actually speak till this afternoon, but I was trying to find something to, to work from this afternoon, and so it seemed like that might, might work.
Okay, so it's, our understanding that this.
The basement space counts.
The size of the proposed apartment is greater than the minimum in the code.
Greater than the minimum in the code, and.
Less than 35 percent.
Well, that's, right, so to be 35 percent of 2,144 square feet, it would have to be not greater than 750.4 square feet. We don't really know exactly what the size of the apartment is, because we didn't get that information, but we, you had measured this out.
Yeah.
And, and I looked at your measurements, and we came up with 681 square feet, not including the utility room, the boiler room.
But I did include those hallways.
But you didn't include the hallways.
That connect the kitchen and the, the living room and the bedroom. Because I think that it's reasonable that that's part of the apartment. And so what did I come up with, what?
You came up with 681 square feet for the apartment, which would be below the 750.4 square feet maximum. I mean, we would prefer typically to have these numbers prepared for. I mean, we would prefer typically to have these numbers prepared for us, but we did scale it from, from the...
Yeah, I mean, I took an engineering rule or...
Well, tell me this, did, is the 1,072 square feet accurate based, based upon your measurements?
Yes.
Okay. Because I thought, I thought parcel access had it as a little higher, but...
It's, it's pretty much a square foundation and so when you...
So the math wasn't hard?
No, no, I didn't, no, no calculus. But the basement area and the first floor area are identical. And, I mean, you could see that from the field trip.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've got that. Okay, anything else?
Nothing else.
All right.
You just answered all?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was really the, the only issue that I had.
Point we would catch on to.
I just want to confirm you're on municipal water and municipal sewer?
Yes, I'm going to be, yeah.
Okay. Tony?
No questions.
James?
No questions.
Fellas?
No questions.
Okay, anyone from the audience wish to address the application at Nine Stride Avenue? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recused? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
You, too. All right, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, I'm Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design, the engineer for the applicant owner who's sitting to my left, Mr. Guido Capellino. Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do, thank you.
Okay, want to briefly explain the application?
Sure, so, so the application is a two lot subdivision of a two and a half acre parcel on Vassar Road. It's, the parcel's located in the R20 zoning district at this time and there is no central sewage available in this area of the town, so the code requires that the minimum lot area go from 20,000 square feet to 43,560 or one acre per lot. We had approached the planning board with a plan that was compliant, meeting the minimum lot areas for both new lots, but at the request of Mr. Capellino, we, we prefer a different layout. And it's a layout where the lot area for the new lot is not met in its entirety, the 43,560. However, the lot is able to function as intended with a water connection along with this onsite sewage disposal system, lot has same driveway, same footprint, the developmental area that's associated with it is exactly the same. So if I flip over the map, the only thing that you'll notice is that the lot lines change. Now, the reason for the, for this request is because of the layout of the land, it's a, the flow and the feel of the property as it exists now, there's, there's a very old farmstead home, there's an old barn, and there's a tennis court on the property. Those are all located basically linear from Vassar Road onto the back and the raw land is generally to the left of it if you're standing at Vassar Road, and that's where the new lot would be. In order for us to be compliant in lot area, we would have to have the lot line jog over and basically encompass the area that's the tennis court. Now, that sits basically behind the farmstead home, so it doesn't necessarily flow well for the new lot, don't feel that the new lot person would necessarily want to use a tennis court, and frankly, the new lot is actually for the Capellinos' new home that they're going to build. They'd need to get out of the old helm, which is just a little bit too much for them at this point. And, and so that's really the, the premise of the application. I, I hope you had a chance to maybe go to the site like I had suggested, because I think when you're there, you really feel it, the topography, the way it moves, the way it all lays out. It didn't make a whole lot of sense necessarily to do that. And, and again, the only difference that you'll ever see is that there's a difference in a lot line, which nobody will ever actually see, it's a, it's an invisible lot line, the same exact developmental footprint will occur as of right, assuming we get our planning board approvals, which seem likely.
Okay, thank you. Christine?
No questions.
Paul?
The new invisible lot line, does that about follow that stone wall that's there?
No, it doesn't. It does not.
It takes a minute.
Not, the, the stone wall that's out there right now was basically 75 feet off of the existing side lot line. And in order for us to come in here, we would have been asking for a second variance at that point, for a minimum lot width not being met. The minimum lot width in the zone is 100 feet, so we decided to meet that one so that we were only asking for one variance. And in doing so, the lot line is further over from the stone wall remains.
All right, and what's the side yard lot line on the, to the left? How, what's, how far are you from the...
On this, on this right here?
Yeah.
22 feet is proposed.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, Art?
No questions.
Okay. And I have no questions.
And I have no questions.
James?
I have no questions.
Fellas?
Neither, thanks.
Okay.
We did, just for the, just so you know, we did ask engineering to just have a quick look at this, just so that they make sure that they feel comfortable with the size of the lot in terms of the septic system and their, with the placement and separations as they're shown.
Is there already a well on that property? You don't have town water, you said, or did you?
There is town water.
Oh, town water, no sewer?
Right. There's no sewer.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 655 Vassar Road?
Yes, sir.
Please, please come forward. You can use the microphone there.
Okay. Thank you.
And your name, please.
Winarski, Edward.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay.
Yes. My argument is I am the adjacent homeowner that's 20 feet away from the house. My name is Winarski, I'm along Vassar Road and in front of me is Tom's Way, that's where I live, to Tom's Way. So I'm in the corner of Tom's Way, Vassar Road and 20 feet to the proposed house. If you can imagine what that area looks like now, it's, it's fully wooded, I have an in-ground pool on my property, and we bought the house because of the wooded area behind our yard. And it sort of encloses the house with the trees and the shrubs and gives us a nice home atmosphere. After seeing the plan, I was here a couple days ago, it's sort of prejudiced that the house is 20 feet away from my house, but yet 100 feet away from the older house. And my argument is, is the house is too close to mine, 20 feet away from my fence line. And I understand, I'm neighbors with the Greidos, with Guido, and I, I like them as neighbors, it's nothing personal, but my, my issue is about how close the proposed building is to my property.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I have a question. How far, how, how far is your house from the lot line?
20 feet.
Yours is 20 feet on the other side of your fence?
Oh, my house?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that question.
We just told us their house is going to be 20 feet from your house.
Well, the fence line to my yard, or I should say where my fence is, beyond that is 20 feet to the new proposed house.
Right, but again, you don't know how far your house is from that?
No, I don't know, I have a pool and I have a small yard between the house, my house and the proposed house.
But you already have a, you already have a stuccate or plastic, you have some kind of screening now with the fence that you have?
It's a wooden fence.
And the trees are on his property or your property?
There's a lot of trees, and essentially those will all be, be removed. And if, if anybody visited the property, I'm not sure if that was in your saying, it would have been quite obvious. If you lived in my house now, I'd have Tom's Way, Vassar Road and a 20-foot building in my yard. And it's the town of Poughkeepsie, please. I, I purchased the house with that environment, with the trees, I never thought there'd be anything between the, the Greidos' home and, and my property, but it's not my property. But essentially, I have to voice my argument in what would be surrounding me with a new building that's 20 feet away from my fence.
Sir, do you know the size of your lot?
I don't have it with me.
Does that mean no?
Oh, it's, it's, it's 0.48 acres.
0.4, half an acre?
Nearly.
Okay, okay. Is it a big pool or a little pool?
It's a 20 by 40.
Okay, and which way does it go in relationship to the fence?
Are particularly parallel? The fence is here, the pool is right?
It's in, it's in parallel to the fence.
Okay, all right, any, any other questions for this general? Okay, if not, all right, thank you.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
This is on?
It should be.
That's on, yeah.
The house, if we're allowed to build it, won't encroach on his property, because it's going to be set far enough back from the road that the, the encroachment will be on the second house on, on Tom's Way, not the one on the corner. If you look at it, the house is going to be set much further back than where his property line is.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Want me to counter?
You're going to have to speak into the microphone.
If you look at the property line between my house and Mr. McLaughlin's house, actually most of the house is behind my property.
Can you, can you point out where your house is?
I don't think it's really illustrated.
Well, I think we can get a general idea.
Well, this is, this is my lot here between Vassar Road and this dotted line.
Okay.
And you can see that the proposed home is in my yard.
Okay, so you're...
And so the second property, my, the adjacent property, Mr. McLaughlin, who's present, is, is this section here, according to this diagram.
You're the first property off of Tom's and Vassar?
That's correct.
Okay, when you go down, Tom's, you're the first one on the right?
I'm on the corner, yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, any other questions? All right, is, anyone else wishes to address?
No.
Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Bruce McLaughlin, I live in four Tom's Way, right next to the property talked about. So I...
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony provided tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Absolutely.
Very well.
My, my only statement, I actually haven't seen the plans, I, I didn't have any time to, to look at them, but I am the second house in and I will, I bought my house in the end of 2013 and I, I bought it under full understanding or thought that that land right behind me was going to be wooded, as, as my neighbor said, you know, it just gives you that nice good feel, you know, I know it is his property, but, you know, I, probably the top three reasons why I bought that house, one of them was that I didn't have anybody living right behind me and I had space, I had woods, I had trees and so forth, and that's pretty much my only statement I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I, I'm sorry, I have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, sure.
How tall is the house? You're going to go one story, Eric? You're doing one story?
Yeah, it's a one-story house, with a partial garage under.
Okay, and my recollection is that the topography of that part of the lot, is that a little lower than on the Tom's Way side?
It is, it, it's, that, that part of Vassar Road comes in and it stays pretty level with Vassar and then starts to go up to the back where the septic system is, so the house is going to kind of be tucked into that side of that hill or bowl, if you will.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, Vassar College, 124 Raymond Avenue, and on this application, I have to recuse myself, so Mr. Lay will bid the chair.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I'm counseled, so to the extent that I make any factual submissions, I will affirm that they will be truthful to the best of my knowledge. I do.
Do you mind stating your names for record?
Rebecca Valk of the Law Firm of Cuddy and Fader.
And I'm Mary Ann Begamon from Vassar College.
Okay, and what would you like to do?
All right, good evening, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are here this evening to seek a, an appeal and interpretation of the Acting Zoning Administrator's letter of November 18th, 2019, which determined that the institute portion of Vassar's proposal for an in and institute is a permitted use, but that the in portion was not. Ms. Begamon is going to give a discussion of the in and institute and how it serves the college's educational purpose.
Thank you. So, you know, as I mentioned, my name is Mary Ann Begamon, I'm the Dean of Strategic Planning and Academic Resources at Vassar College, a position I assumed in 2012 after serving as a faculty member in the Chemistry Department since 1985. I'm also a Vassar alum. We're here to appeal the determination of the Acting Zoning Administrator issued November 18th and request an interpretation that the in and institute are permitted as part of the overall college use. What this project includes, as you're aware, is 3,500 square feet of convening space, a 50-room inn and a full-service restaurant. Together, this project in its entirety is known as the In-N-Out Institute for the Liberal Arts. Fundamentally, the In-N-Out Institute furthers the college's educational mission. To clarify what that means, I'd like to quote from the college's mission statement, which in part reads, "Vassar supports a high standard of engagement in teaching and learning, scholarship and artistic endeavor. A broad and deep curriculum," and this is the important part, I think, for tonight, "and a residential campus that fosters a learning community." So to repeat, Vassar supports, dot, 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 "a residential campus that fosters a learning community." A residential campus that fosters a learning community is precisely what the in and institute strives to be. As reflected in its mission statement, the Institute for the Liberal Arts is Vassar's public classroom, a forum for intellectual engagement through programming that ranges from established modes of academic inquiry to path-breaking collaborations. The institute will allow the college to curate programs by leveraging renowned faculty and their research. It will allow us to gather experts from local, national and global communities to dialogue and debate with campus experts about challenging topics. Our goal is to model the value of a liberal arts approach that includes evaluating all sides of an issue and through an inclusive process constructively advances dialogue on these challenging topics. Whereas Vassar, like many small liberal arts colleges, have historically focused their educational efforts inwardly, this project will allow us to work increasingly in participation with the local, regional and global communities. The In-N-Out Institute is much like a retreat space that provides not only excellent meeting space, but combines the opportunity to convene with a place to stay and eat. The combined program is in fact a microcosm of the current college experience in which our undergraduates learn, live and eat together. By providing this retreat-like environment, we model the residential campus that fosters a learning community. In addition, the In-N-Out Institute will also provide better space for our board meetings and other meetings which currently exist across campus. And the project will benefit Vassar in its recruitment of students. And the project will benefit Vassar in its recruitment of students and employees. Higher education today, especially colleges like Vassar, are under pressure into, in the environment in which we, we operate. There's growing tuition costs, a changing job market, changing demographic of college-going, the college-going population. All of these things lead to questioning, others of questioning the value of the liberal arts education. Vassar wants to take a leading role in shaping a conversation about the value of the liberal arts, and we believe that the In-N-Out Institute will provide us with a space to do just that.
As the, as the board members should have received, we made a supplemental submission on December 3rd, and I will not repeat that in detail, but I would like to review the key points with the board members. The first is that we believe that the Acting Zoning Administrator, based upon the information he had in front of him, erred by parsing this into three separate discrete uses. We believe that this proposal is a cohesive use that is to interact together, and it is a unique situation where the college is proposing a use that is integral to education. This is not a situation where we're looking to establish, for example, a hotel with conference space on Route 9. The In-N-Out Institute is intended to serve the Vassar College community, and it is intended to be focused on the Vassar College community. We believe that, it was also, excuse me, the, just going into the statutory background, your code does not define college and universities. What is a college and university has been an ever-evolving concept since the 1960s. What is deemed to be uses that are cohesive with the educational element. Given that you do not have a definition of college or university, under strict construction, you have to determine in favor of the property owner and against the town any ambiguities. This is not a new concept. Colleges have been doing this. The earliest case we were able to find was in 1969, when the New York Institute proposed a college, a conference center with guest accommodations on Long Island. As we have stated, this is not a hotel. We are not the Marriott, we are not the Hyatt. This is guest accommodations that are going to be used for, in primary part, by the Vassar College campus. We are not looking to market this to people traveling into the area, going to other key points such as the water parks in the area, or Legoland when it's built across the river. These are guest spaces that are going to be used integrally with the in and institute. We believe that the definition of college is deemed to be expansive. We gave you examples in our submission of how the courts have reviewed religious uses and agricultural uses. Religious uses are not just the temple or the church, and agricultural uses are not just your fields, your farms, and your barns. These uses include additional accessory uses that help to complete the mission, and it is our submission that a college is just as expansive. We note in our submission that the Court of Appeals has made clear that educational uses are by their very nature beneficial and serve the public's welfare and morals. For this reason, attempts to rein in the activity of educational institutions and unreasonably prohibit uses have been repeatedly frowned upon by the courts. In addition, one alternative argument we have made is that you also do not have a definition for educational or vocational training center within your code. Those are typically understood to be locations where a skill or trade to be pursued as a career is taught. I think this institute would fall squarely within such a definition, given the purposes as explained by the dean. Finally, as our third alternative argument, we believe that this is a permissible accessory use. The Acting Zoning Administrator found that it is, that an accessory use is permissible on this lot, so that is not a question that is before this board at the time. If you were to find it is not part of the primary college use, and we do believe that that argument is a strong argument that this board should adopt, we do in the alternative believe that it is an accessory use. Your Acting Zoning Administrator, in making the determination that it was not a custom, relied upon the word "custom." Your code states "customarily," which is something that can be according to custom or established practice. The dictionary's use of the word "or" is significant because those are two different standards. We have submitted to you that 95 colleges and universities across the country, with 12 more in development, have guest accommodation use. We do not need to show that it is a majority. We need to show that it is an established practice that is taking place on college campuses. If you review the case law, there is no, simply because there will be some use by the public does not limit the fact that it will further the educational purpose of the college. We are not in a position of needing to show numbers as to how much of the public may or may not use. What we can state to you is, this is being modeled for the college to use cohesively for guest lecturers, symposiums, and educational purposes as set forth by the dean.
I just have a couple of questions before it goes to the rest of the panel. Do you at least agree that there's, that colleges and universities do not have unfettered discretion and can completely ignore zoning regulations?
No, we do not, we believe we completely ignore it, but if there is a reasonable relationship to the educational use, then the courts will typically stand behind it.
Okay, and you, in your information that you provided, you came up with a number of other colleges and universities. Do you have, I'm sorry, unless I missed that, do you have a list of those colleges and universities?
We were able to gather about 40-plus, and I do have that information. We did not put it in our submission. We've been working to locate the additional 50. The individual who did the study on that viewed that that was work product that he had developed, so we are working to locate them through internet searches.
Okay, do you think you'd be able to provide it at some later time?
We can make our best efforts to provide a full list of 95.
I would ask nothing more than your best effort.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions?
Yes. Initially, you said it was going to be, initially you said it was going to be for college use, now you're saying it's going to have some public use, so which way is it going?
No, it's focused on the college use, but there will be, when it is not otherwise committed to the college use, it will be available for public rental.
Okay, so you're, you're going both sides on this. Again, the initial thing was it would be for college use only.
No, I never said the word "only." If it is otherwise used for a symposium, a lecture, and the rooms are filled for the guests, the Board of Trustees, it will not be available for anyone to utilize the facilities on that date.
And how often do you think that will happen, that the Board of Trustees are going to fill that up?
Well, the Board of Trustees alone, if we're looking at just one, that board, they meet biannually on the campus?
Three times a year.
Three times a year, but we have a number of other boards, and we're intending on offering lectures and symposiums.
And the restaurant's going to be public or private?
The restaurant will be available for individuals to visit from the public.
Okay, thank you. Jim left.
The in is going to be available to anyone?
If there is availability.
Even though the primary use for which you intend it may be a certain group of people, if anybody chooses to pick up the phone and make a reservation, they can do so.
Yes.
Any other questions?
My question's for us, too.
Phil's?
How is the college currently meeting the need that you assume the in will need, will fill? Phil, how are you doing that now?
So, we, on occasion, will host the kinds of events that we plan in the future to host at the in and institute. And in, in part, we're doing that ineffectively. We have multiple meeting spaces that are scattered across campus. We house attendees, if they're not members of the current Vassar community, they would be housed in local inns or hotels on Route 9 or elsewhere while they're attending an event at the college. So this provides us to collect those three functions in one location, as I described, much like a retreat-type environment, where the importance is that you're convening, living, and eating in a single environment. I think we've all had experiences in which the, the serendipitous encounter with other people who are attending a conference or an event is extremely important to furthering the work that's going on, whether that's a cup of coffee, or a breakout meeting, or something like that. So this provides us with an opportunity to have the residential, the eating, and the convening all in one location, which you can really focus on the work that's being done.
And the in will house how many individuals?
50 rooms.
I have no questions at this time.
Can you tell me, the symposiums that you intend to provide, will they be open solely to, limited to the campus, or will that be a public event?
I think it depends on the, the particular event that we're hosting. Some will be primarily for Vassar constituencies, Vassar faculty, students, and administrators, and other, others will be definitely open to the public. I think our idea here, as I stated, is to be a public classroom.
Can you give me some ideas or some examples that you have in mind?
Sure, so, you know, for example, we could host an event on memory and trauma, let's say, in which we bring together faculty from our neuroscience and behavior programs to talk about the neurological basis of memory, and we could bring together faculty who study traumatic histories, to what is the impact of trauma historically on people's ability to thrive and to learn. And we can combine that with conversations with local practitioners of mental, mental health, or local educators in public school systems. We have children that experience trauma every day. If we want these students to learn in an environment that supports them, we can benefit from gathering together both the scholars who are studying the neurological basis of memory, to the impact that memory has on our ability to learn, to the impact that trauma has on memory and the ability to learn, and that can be a public-private, if you want to call it that, conversation from which we all go away from having learned and richer than we were before.
Have you provided seminars in the, in the past in that realm, in that idea?
Not exactly that idea. I think it stems from an event that we held last summer, in which we fortuitously had a number of people that were talking about the, these topics together. So we haven't held anything quite like that, but we've held other events that I think are of interest to the public as well as to the Vassar faculty and students.
And how well-attended are those?
It depends. Sometimes they're, you know, we, we have to turn people away, and sometimes they're designed to be quite small.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, so, it sounds pretty much like you're going to be competing with other hotels in the area for the most part, for, you'll be competing with other hotels.
We don't believe we will. We believe that, we believe that our price point's going to be higher than some of those, and it's going to be focused on individuals who are staying in the area.
And why does it have to be on that property? Vassar has a lot of property. You have the farm, you have behind the existing buildings, why does it have to be right there on the greens? What, what net gain is there for that?
My understanding is that that's not a topic that we're arguing right here.
That issue's been debated and evaluated at the planning board, and that matter has been, I believe, addressed at the planning board completely. This matter is whether or not the use itself is permissible as part of the college.
It has not been finally addressed. I mean, the topic has been discussed.
Right, so it's not finalized?
It's not finalized. But they, again, but they are correct that the issue tonight isn't really about that.
Just a question, but the answer was correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, now I can open up for comments from the audience. I would remind you, if you could keep your comments limited to three minutes, and people have signed a, a sign-up sheet, so I'll go down the list. Marta Knapp?
Hello, thank you for your attention. Do you swear? I swear everything I'm going to say is as true as I can make, I mean, I'm going to tell the truth. My name is Marta Knapp, and I actually live in the city of Poughkeepsie. So, I just have my quick three-minute statement here. I am very alarmed by VC's plan to destroy a very special spot, the Williams Faculty Housing, the single-family faculty house right next to it, and half of the green space sweeping down from Alumni House, which includes well-planned landscaping with trees and shrubs. Vassar has plenty of open space nearby that I heard the planners had considered near the Vassar Farm on Hooker Avenue, but decided it was too far from the campus. I wonder if the true reason might not be that Vassar doesn't want the hotel guests to hear the gunfire of the annual culling of the deer at the Vassar Farm. The Tudor-style architecture that looks very European and is beautiful and actually predates the Alumni House would be lost. Where will the displaced faculty live, especially the adjunct professors, in the proposed hotel, which now I hear is going to be higher in cost than the other hotels around? I don't think the Hotel Institute/Institute should be permitted in a neighborhood that is full of unique architecture housing numerous Vassar faculty in old-style, college-town-feel ambiance. The destruction/construction would be very disruptive of the narrow roundabout intersection of the College Avenue and Raymond Avenue intersection right there. There is a plethora of conference space on the Vassar campus, and even an inn called Alumni House right behind the proposed development. And all the questions you asked about what the hotel rules are, they apply at Alumni House. And why not put yet another, in my opinion, ugly, modern-style structure on the campus itself, for instance, near the golf course or the athletic facilities? I sincerely hope that the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board, the ZBA, denies permitted accessory use or permitted principal use. There is less and less green space in Arlington, and the current disturbing proposal to build a 50-room hotel on the other end of Raymond Avenue near the eastbound arterial, which would require tearing down the former Arlington Elementary School, should be enough hotel space for the neighborhood. How many hotels does Raymond Avenue really need or want? And I was listening to the speakers right before me, and I thought the use of the word "pathbreaking" was so classic, because talk about pathbreaking. This would break a very antique path indeed. And this thing about, you know, an alum who's now the dean of, of planning and development and a former professor of chemistry, stuff like that, you know, I just, it's, I just, I know we can't all agree, but anyone who's been on campus as long as that woman has should know the precious spot that they're talking, planning on destroying will totally ruin that whole part of Vassar. And if I recall correctly, the same architect that is talking about the architecture for this proposal is the same one that's involved in expansion of a hotel on Route 9, so I definitely think there's like some, if I remember correctly from the planning board meeting where I also had my opinion expressed. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to remind any of the people that want to speak that the issue here is solely whether or not the zoning administrator made a correct determination about the project. This is not a variance request. We have nothing to do with the project at all, with the exception of whether the definition found by the zoning administrator is correct. So, Luke Hunsberger?
Mr. Hunsberger, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Hello, my name is Luke Hunsberger. I'm a professor of computer science at Vassar College. Vassar wants to build a hotel. However, Vassar's property sits within the institutional zone, which clearly does not permit hotel and conference use. Therefore, Vassar is asking the zoning board to come up with a novel interpretation of the relevant town code, claiming that the in and institute is permitted principal or accessory use. Basically, they are arguing that since the law does not meet their desires, the zoning board should reinterpret the law. I strongly urge the zoning board to reject Vassar's request. The administrator's decision was correct. Why? The purpose of the institutional zone is reflected in the following statement from the code. Quote, "This district recognizes the importance of these institutions and provides protections for their continued growth and operation while ensuring that nearby residential neighborhoods are protected. On the one hand, denying Vassar the ability to operate a commercial hotel will in no way harm their continued growth and... way harm their continued growth and operation. Operating a hotel is simply not part of their academic mission." And by the way, the Alumni House is advertising for weddings, so if you think that the institute is not going to do similar things, well, I think it will. Anyway, "On the other hand, allowing Vassar to operate a commercial hotel adjacent to the College Ave. neighborhood would have severe and negative impacts to that neighborhood. For example, it would destroy roughly half of the beautiful open green space, which would be an environmental tragedy. That green space is also the only place where the Vassar and Poughkeepsie communities regularly come together. It would increase traffic and hence decrease safety along Raymond and College Avenues, where there have been several recent traffic accidents involving pedestrians. The hotel and its two giant parking lots would ruin the small-scale feel of the residential neighborhood, which currently is very much a walking community. It would demolish the historic 100-year-old Williams Buildings, forcing the dislocation of 21 families, further exacerbating an already serious crisis in faculty housing at Vassar. In short, allowing Vassar to operate a commercial hotel at the proposed location would certainly not, quote, 'ensure that nearby residential neighborhoods are protected,' end quote. In addition, interpreting the institutional zone text to allow for hotel use would effectively open the door to Vassar building additional hotels elsewhere on their property at any time in the future. It would also open the door to Marist College, Duchess Community College, St. Francis Hospital, and the Oakwood School to construct and operate their own commercial hotels. In short, it would open a Pandora's Box, subjecting residential communities adjacent to institutional zones across Poughkeepsie to unwanted commercial development. Finally, it should be noted that Vassar's proposed 50-room hotel is unnecessary, given that the proposed redevelopment of the Arthur S. May School currently calls for, among other things, a 110-room hotel. I have a petition signed by residents of the College Ave. neighborhood, as well as Vassar professors, Vassar students, and other Town of Poughkeepsie residents. The petition urges the zoning board to reject Vassar's request to widen the interpretation of the institutional zone, because it would have such disastrous effects on the community." Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can give you a copy, I can give you this petition, but I would like a copy of it. Is that okay?
Yes.
That's fine.
Sure.
All right, Jonathan Gordon.
Mr. Gordon, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Like Dean Begman, I am also an alum and a professor at Vassar College, and I also want to speak against the proposed interpretation of the zoning law. The town plan says zoning literally shapes the community, and is an essential tool in determining its character. Vassar is seeking to change the interpretation of the institutional zone, not to fulfill its purpose as a college, but for the occasional convenience of its trustees at the expense of the community. The idea of the institute was retroactively added to make this more palatable. This is being attested by the press in that faculty meetings. If the zoning board gives their approval, Vassar proposes to demolish the historic Williams Faculty Residence, replacing it with parking lots, and put a commercial hotel, conference center, and restaurant in a residential neighborhood. It's impossible to separate the general question of whether running a hotel is consistent with the intent of the institutional zone, from the harm of the specific plan that this interpretation is being sought to allow. I understand the limited scope in which you are able to make a decision, but it's very difficult not to see this as the total proposal Vassar is making. College Ave. is a quiet residential street. With this construction, its inhabitants can expect to face an increasing increase in traffic, at a time when the college is already struggling to improve traffic safety in the area. Instead of beautiful Tudor-style buildings, our neighbors will have expansive parking lots outside of their homes. Instead of a green space with trees to walk and play among, they'll have their way blocked by a hotel that looks like a modern office building. This is the harm being done to the community in violation of the institutional zoning. In constructing the new hotel, conference center, and large parking lots, Vassar would create a dominant commercial island in the neighborhood. I urge you to block this plan by upholding the decision that this is not an appropriate and permitted use of the institutional zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to submit that statement, sir? Do you have that statement written out? Do you want to submit that?
I do. It does have favorite edition signs. If you'd like a copy, you're welcome to it. I apologize for the inconvenience.
You can submit it at a later date if you like.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob Legacy.
Good evening. Bob Legacy, Director of the Arlington Business Improvement District.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is. I'm here tonight as probably one of the few to speak in favor of the inn and institute. Vassar College is a very, very major part of the Arlington Business Improvement District, and has been very important to us in our strategic planning and our master plan in Arlington. Without the Vassar College support years ago, the district would not exist as it is today. And it's through their support that it is continuing. This institute and inn gives us an institute, gives us great opportunity to work together, to bring people together to talk about economic development here in Duchess County, which will bring in people from outside the area to talk, to meet with us, people in the city and the town, also to talk about education in the City of Poughkeepsie School District. This inn and institute is a mechanism to bring people from the community, Vassar, and from other people, to talk about progress we can bring to this community, about education, the opportunity for job growth, the opportunity to build our business district, and to ask the people actually to stay in the inn, to come out and support businesses in the district. My handmade concerns also, because we do have a farmer's market that takes part every Thursday, that will continue. It's one-fourth of the lawn will be gone. And this institute may bring more people into the district who may want to invest in this area, and want to make the Town of Poughkeepsie, the Arlington area, part of their business plan. It's a hard decision for you, but for the businesses and people in the area, this is an opportunity to grow, and we may not get it again. I thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if, oh, here, here, seems disconnected.
Mr. Caruso, do you swear or affirm? Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
My name is, my name is Francesco Caruso. I live in College Ave., 171 College Ave., and I am one of the residents in this building that, according to the proportion from Vassar College, will be destroyed to do this parking lot for the hotel inn. Give me a second, please.
Are you, are you planning to project something up on the screen?
Yes, I have a PowerPoint. Yes, thank you.
All right. He's got it.
Okay. So Williams House was a gift from one of the first alumnae, 1870 class, Harriet Williams. The college was initiated nine years earlier. It is a lack of respect for her memory that Vassar College administration wants to destroy these Tudor-style buildings for a parking lot after a recent donation. How this donor can accept to erase the donation of another alumnae donor? The historical profile of these three buildings cannot be denied. They were built by one of the most famous architects in the country, the Hand family. Architects Hand and Hand were part of the Hand family of architects. There are several, Richard, Joseph, et cetera. And besides William, they built the facade of the Great Hall and the East Wing of the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York City, the pedestal of the Statue of Liberty. Now, let's talk a little bit about architecture. So this is a website for the architectural, this architectural digest, about the most iconic buildings in New York State. There are 51 slides, one for each town, for each state, approximately. So who made this? This is the front page, so page two. Who made this building? The architect, the same architect created the family group builder of Williams House, the Hance. Slide 33 of this 51 is another, is the same building now looking for, for, for a part. Okay? This is another one. Slide 40 is in Rhode Island, also made by the Hance, the brick in Newport. So this is among the best architects we can have in the country. How can you destroy this? So how the administration can ignore these features? I'm not surprised that one of the most important Vassar professors in the architectural area, Nick Adams, retired, recommended to the administration not to destroy Williams House. His advice was ignored. But we'll be a little bit more about Nick Adams, okay? It's a specific communication that he will do.
Sir, I'm going to tell you that your time is up, if you just want to finish up.
Excuse me?
Your time is up?
Time's up? Okay.
If you want to, if you want to just finish up a conclusion?
No, that's not necessary. So I just wanted to show the agreement between these buildings with Alumni House. You see in the rear Alumni House, the end letter, the beans there is exactly the same. The only difference is just the roof. So this is an ensemble, it's not the three buildings alone. This is an ensemble that respect the architectural line, so.
All right. Do you want to provide that PowerPoint to us?
Sure, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Rossi?
Hi, good evening.
Ms. Rossi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
My name is Miriam Rossi. I'm a professor of chemistry in the, at Vassar College. I've been there since 1982, and I currently live in the Williams Apartments that are in this plan to be torn down. But what I am going to do is actually read a letter to the zoning board from a professor emeritus, who unfortunately could not be here, but she really wanted to make her statements heard. Her name is Beth Darlington. So her letter says, "I am writing to oppose the construction of a conference center hotel and parking lot on College Ave. in Poughkeepsie. The college is asking the Town Zoning Board to make a special exception for this construction, but in the eyes of many members of the local community, this construction would be an unfortunate mistake. I am a retired professor from Vassar College, and Poughkeepsie has been my home since 1967. I currently live in Vassar Housing, in a house on Vassar land that I purchased in 1995. Over the years, I've been distressed by the college's negligence of faculty housing. Destroying the 21 Williams Apartment units for the faculty now seems an egregious mistake to me, especially in light of the fact that we were told before, in the college's mission, that it's a residential campus which fosters a learning community, and to destroy the residential component of it where the faculty live seems a little ill-advised." But to come back to Beth Darlington, a home near mine that once housed members of the faculty was torn down several years ago. Another is currently empty at 170 College Ave. I've been told that those houses have black mold in their basements, and they're uninhabitable. At the Town Board meeting that I attended on November 21st, my colleague spoke sensibly and eloquently about the ways in which the proposed conference center on College Ave. would create dangerous traffic conditions, eliminate a beautiful open space on the Alumni House lawn, where a farmer's market occurs seasonally, and introduce an unattractive parking lot, as well as destroying faculty housing. The project planned for the site of the Arthur S. May School on Raymond Ave. makes Vassar's proposed hotel and conference center unnecessary. The proposed Vassar project includes plans for a conference center. I believe it would be wiser to create such a center on the campus itself. To preserve the residential integrity.
Ms. Rossi?
Yeah, just, I'm finishing.
Okay.
To preserve the residential integrity on College Ave., I hope that the zoning board will deny the college's request for an exception to the current building code. Respectfully submitted, Beth Darlington. Thank you very much.
Do you want to submit her letter?
I will.
Okay. Eve Danborough?
Hello, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. I would, I would like to speak to the zoning variance. Currently, Vassar College has an extensive program of conferences, panel talks, symposia, seminar. Some of them are currently just for the college. Often, many members of the community come, they're often advertised. And I would like to add that I, to say that I don't see the need for the conference center, because on the campus as is, there are a number, quantity of lecture halls of various sizes, some of them quite large, theaters, auditorium for these panel discussions and events. So we do have a robust program of different topics, some more academic in nature, and others that would bring in a wider community. Also, I'm in the Department of Art and Art History. Some, across campus, there are reception halls and spaces for mingling, for the wine and cheese, or refreshments in a day-long conference. So I don't see the need for this variance for the educational use. Alumni House has rooms. It also has a large dining hall in my department, where we have endowed lectures or events. We have an auditorium in our Taylor Hall, reception space, and often a large dinner for 60, 50, or fewer could be had at Alumni House catered. Rooms, not everyone can, it is true, can stay overnight in Alumni House, if you have out-of-campus guests from beyond the campus, from the wider academic or intellectual community. So there are hotels in the area, from the Inn at the Falls, Days Inn, and it seems as if there is an abundance of new proposals and projects for hotels. So I am arguing against the necessity to have everything together in one building. If the college would like to pursue this, I think the idea of building a residential conference center and restaurant at the, at the empty land on the farm. My, I was going to talk a little bit about the historic quality of the buildings, but I assume in the public green space, that's not your primary interest?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I won't say anything, but to reiterate that, to my mind, too, that Williams House was, was built or established as a home for women faculty in about 1920, I see as important. And also, it is a graceful historic building that matches Alumni House. And if I may, if my time is an out, the green space there was designed along the principles of Frederick, Frederick Law Olmsted, who designed Central Park. So the idea of a vista and expanse, a gentle sloping lawn with a path bordered by trees and plants, opens up the community, and we know it's a public space. The current plan, I'll get off, stop. The current plan would damage and deteriorate that with a building that is not graceful or pleasing in an aesthetic manner. So thank you.
Thank you.
out of camp, guests from beyond the campus, from the wider academic or intellectual community. So there are hotels in the area from the Inn at the Falls, Days Inn, and it seems as if there is an abundance of new proposals and projects for hotels. So I am arguing against the necessity to have everything together in one building. If the college would like to pursue this, I think the idea of building a residential conference center and restaurant at the, at the empty land on the farm. My, I was going to talk a little bit about the historic quality of the buildings, but I assume in the public green space, that's not your primary interest?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I won't say anything, but to reiterate that, to my mind too, that Williams House was, was built or established as a home for women faculty in about 1920, I see as important. And also, it is a graceful historic building that matches Alumni House. And if I may, if my time is now out, the green space there was designed along the principles of Frederick, Frederick Law Olmsted, who designed Central Park. So the idea of a vista and expanse, a gentle sloping lawn with a path bordered by trees and plants opens up the community, and we know it's a public space. The current plan, I'll get off, stop. The current plan would damage and deteriorate, deteriorate that with a building that is not graceful or pleasing in an aesthetic manner. So thank you.
Thank you. Was that close at all?
That was close. Oh, God.
It's actually Jenny Quinn Colabella, but you were close.
Jeannie, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. Good evening. I want to begin by thanking the zoning administrator for acting already to protect the residential neighborhood along College Avenue by declaring last month that institutional zone does not permit Vassar to build or operate a commercial hotel. Vassar is now appealing that ruling. I urge you to reject the request. The original ruling was right. The institutional zone does not permit the operation of a commercial hotel. In constructing the new hotel, conference center, and large parking lot, Vassar will create a dominant commercial island in that neighborhood. The College Avenue neighborhood needs the protection that's encoded in section 210-38 of the zoning regulations. Allowing Vassar to build a hotel and two giant parking lots adjacent to that neighborhood would have horrible consequences for that community. Not only would it ruin the beautiful green space that so many people from Vassar and the Poughkeepsie community have enjoyed together for so long, it would also increase traffic, decrease safety, and completely change the character of what is right now a walkable community. The corner of Raymond and College Avenues is no place to build a commercial hotel. A much more appropriate place would be the site of the Arthur S. May School, which others are currently developing into a 110-room hotel, 187 apartments, and lots of commercial space. Please protect the quality of life of the college residential neighborhood by rejecting Vassar's request to build a commercial hotel. Thank you.
Is that a statement you want to leave that you want to introduce?
Not much difference.
Okay. Shirley Johansson Land?
Hello, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Thank you.
Much of what I have planned to talk about has been mentioned by colleagues and others who have just spoken. I am very much opposed to the location of this planned so-called conference center hotel restaurant, because I think Vassar has a lot of other places, including along Hooker Avenue, which is already zoned commercially, very near where what is called the West Campus, which is playing fields and so on. It could be there. There are a variety of other places, as people have mentioned. I particularly wanted to mention what I think is the danger of having a lot of people come, and I think most of the year when there are not conferences, this will be in fact rented out commercially to whoever wants, wants to stay there. People who are not familiar with this, I'm sorry, what is basically a very residential walking community, where people walk to the post office, they walk to local shops, and they go back and forth across Raymond Avenue a great deal, will have a very serious traffic hazard. I guess I feel very passionately about it because I was the third car behind a student hit by a car crossing over one of those crosswalks about two weeks ago, who sat there for hours in traffic while the ambulances and so on came. And I think it's a real problem with our roundabouts in this kind of a residential community to have a commercial hotel space right at that corner, which is so close to where all of these crosswalks, primarily to connect the college with the other side of Raymond Avenue, but widely used by other people. But I also wanted to point out that I spent an afternoon at the last open green market, which is in that smaller space, the last time it was open, and I found that a large number of the merchants and also the customers there had heard about it and were very opposed to this, and in fact were very happy to sign our petition, that they felt that the incursion, the destruction of the, at least a part of the green space would, would not be in fact appropriate. I would like to respond to something that I did not plan to talk about based upon what Dean Marion Bergman said. I was chairman of the economics department many times. I've been at Vassar for 52 years. Although I'm emeritus and retired, I still occasionally teach and have an office on campus from which I came to this meeting. Our department has been holding conferences, many open to the public and announced in local newspapers, often attended by up to 150 people, with multiple guests from off-campus, including distinguished people. I was reminded, since he died today, or at least the obituary was in paper to the Paul Volcker, who was head of the Federal Reserve for many years, was one of the people around whom we organized a conference. But we do it every year, and we have plenty of spaces on campus. We have dinners in Alumni House. We have people staying close around, and we have a large department lounge in which people meet in between all of these meetings that are held in various buildings. There is no lack of communication because of lack of space. I therefore don't think, quite apart from what I think of the negative things about tearing down faculty housing, creating traffic hazards and so on, I don't, I don't think we need a conference center. I was very depressed when I heard.
Your time is up if you just want to wrap it up?
Okay. The words inward-looking, because at least my part of the campus has been outward-looking for the last 50 years. And we've attracted people from all over the world, and we've had a lot of visitors. We've had a lot of members of the community to which these, these conferences are usually open. And it seems to me that we're doing exactly what we say we need the conference center for without needing the conference center, particularly since Alumni House is well and alive and still there. And in addition, a new hotel is going to be built two blocks away. Thank you.
Is it, is it Mita Chodri?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. My name is Mita Chodri, and I'm a professor of history at Vassar College, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the educational purpose of the Inland Institute and how it comes together. And I'm actually going to use my own research as, as a vignette. I wore, my current research topic is on the abuse, sexual abuse and rape in the Catholic Church in the 17th and 18th century. And my purpose is to write a victim-centered history that brings suppressed voices to the margins. So for example, the voices of women of color and women of lower classes who work for the Women of Williams House but are whitewashed out of that history. So in doing this, I was invited to Europe, to a workshop in which it was, we lived in the same hotel, we ate together, we did everything together. Not only was it about giving papers, but out of it were a series of conversations. And as a result of this, I am currently planning and hoping to bring to Vassar is an international workshop that deals with the question of sexual abuse, of history and of religion, to bring people internationally, people of different faiths, people of different disciplines and different historical periods, to talk about an issue that some may not consider important, but I think the current news would say it is. What does this kind of environment do? This kind of environment allows for that kind of cross-fertilization that happens at a moment where these problems are considered essential. And the spaces at Vassar are not always handicap accessible as the new Inland Institute, and that kind of accessibility is one of the ways in which we think about accessibility, and I think is key. The housing, for example, Alumni House is barely accessible in that way. The classrooms are very varied in terms of what you can do as well. And frankly, I speak as a professional that takes pride in what I do and in representing Vassar, and in fact wanting to see the Hudson Valley as part of a, engaged and a stage for a dialogue of something that is consuming so many faiths in so many countries in this world right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Sabo?
I'm Julie. I want to thank you all for.
Julie, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it's true. Thank you. I want to, first I want to thank the zoning board. I think you made absolutely the right decision, and I encourage you very strongly to not, to continue to support and protect the residential community. I live, I'm one of the Williams residents, and I think it's kind of ironic in, in Vassar's presentation, they talk about the residential nature of this proposed institute, which by the way could be residential on Hooker Avenue. It doesn't have to be residential. But meanwhile, they're destroying the residences in which we live. You know, there's a kind of an, and, and they're not addressing the needs of the residents that are currently there. I mean, as, as far as faculty housing, or traffic, or some of the many other things we've, we've heard of tonight. And then the second thing, the second thing is that I wanted to talk a little bit about what the lawyer said about the expansion of the idea of education, and that that's a way, one of their arguments about why the variance was wrong and the threatened lawsuit that would accompany that, because the court would of course favor the educational institution, is, my question is, like, how far does it go? Like, how far does an expansion of an education mission go? And when, when you really ask the question is, who is operating the hotel? Is it Vassar? Who, who's in charge of the hotel? It's not Vassar, it's a commercial partnership. And this is a, this is a question of like whether, if it's a commercial partnership with a private, non, a profit institution, then how does that mesh with this expanded idea of an educational mission? At least that would, I don't understand that. Like, it's, it's a, anyway, and I think it's something that, I think it's just a, a form of legal mumbo jumbo. I would really stick to the idea that it's a commercial operation, even if it's going to have sponsor educational programs, which is good, and they can do that somewhere else. It doesn't have to be in the middle of our apartment buildings, right? That, what's the line? Where, where does it delineate? Like, how many weddings make it not an educational thing? Like, how many weddings does the commercial people who are operating this hotel, how many weddings are they going to have to have in order for that hotel to pay for itself? How expensive does that hotel have to be? Like, I don't understand the numbers with this. You know what I mean? If it's a public, if it's a private, if it's a nonprofit thing, which is why they're asking for the variance, right? It's a nonprofit educational thing, then how does that mesh with the idea of a hotel that has to get a certain amount of people in there in order for it to pay for itself? And if it's not paying for itself, then is Vassar going to pay for it? Like, it doesn't make any sense to me. So anyway, I would try to stick to a more conservative idea of commercial or non-commercial, and please protect our residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Come on up.
My name is Jennifer Burke-Golchmit.
Hi, Jennifer, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do, thank you. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Jennifer Burke-Golchmit, and I live at 6 Fulton Court. My property is adjacent to one of, to two of the properties that will be, that are proposed to be rezoned. And I'd like to tell you a little about the history of my residence there and relationship to Vassar. So first I want to commend Vassar for their wish to be more engaging with the world and the community. I think that the work of the economist who spoke and any intent on Vassar's College to have greater engagement with the local community and with community beyond is, is commendable, and I support that. I have asked Vassar to be more engaged on occasions with us and with my activism in the community against gun violence, and have been on both counts turned down. So it's hard for me to reconcile their stated mission here with what I observed to be their actions in the past when invited to engage. I was told by the head of the Community Engagement Committee at Vassar, I was asked why Vassar should be involved against gun violence, if you can see, at the high school. The events surround our schools. When we surrounded Poughkeepsie High School against gun violence, they could not understand why they should be involved in such a thing. Forgive my casual dress, I'm the mother of two young children, a six and eight-year-old, and we bought that house after a few years of waiting to do so, for it to come on the market. And we chose it specifically because it was in such a sweet and, and kind of old-fashioned residential spot. It's surrounded by properties and a buffer of trees and wildlife and animals. And we live within a few yards of the Vassar Alumni House. Our property is so close to the Vassar Alumni House that in the fall of 2013, the vice president, who had just arrived at Vassar, approached us and asked us to meet with him. I had a two-week-old infant in my hands, and I hadn't left the house other than to the doctor since she was born. We met him at the Vassar Alumni House while I breastfed my child, my daughter, and he told us he wanted to buy our house. We had moved in three months previous to that, and I told him that we were not selling. We had just renovated it, and we had just had a baby, and we loved, loved our, our new home. But he continued to push that we sell the house because they wanted to build on top, the Inland Institute on top of the Vassar Alumni House. And they would need to own our property to avoid repeated hearings such as this because we were so close to the property line, to the building. And we said we would be happy to sign some kind of document that when we did sell, we would be happy to sell to Vassar, but since the house had been twice on the market in three years, we couldn't understand why they hadn't purchased it previously. He had proposed the idea of the Inland Institute, and the conversation ended when we contacted him for follow-up. He did not reply. I would say that Vassar has, has not invited the community in any way to participate in discussions around this institute or around this zoning with them directly. And so many of us live in the neighborhood and, and interact with Vassar in so many ways. I feel that, I'll wrap up, that Vassar has many alternative locations that are wonderful, both next to the Crafted Cup, they could build vertically, they could have bought the school and done so much for Vassar and the business district, or Vassar Farm or on campus to do this, but kind of railroad, railroading the residential community is irreversible. And if their Inland Conference Center doesn't work out, it's just ruined, ruins a neighborhood. The last thing I'll testify to is that with the present flow, with only 15 rooms at the Alumni House, because we had our wedding there, we hear music and crowds late into the night, dozens of nights every year in our backyard as it is. And expanding to now two hotels or three really just changes the very nature of the neighborhood. So I support and commend your close scrutiny of Vassar's request to rezone residential houses to become a commercial hotel in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening.
What's your name, please?
My name is Neil Levinger. In full disclosure, I'm married to the previous speaker.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So I'm a little confused about some things, because I'm hearing different proposals and different ideas put forward by the college in front of different audiences. So for example, we're hearing that this hotel is absolutely integral to the educational nature of the college, yet what they said to the planning board was that they had rejected a proposal to put it on the tennis courts, kind of across from the green lawn, because they didn't want all these adults on the campus where the young people are. So either it's integrated with the college or as part, and a part of its educational mission, or there are going to be all these other people not connected to the college coming into the Inland Conference Center that they don't want right on the college space. We also heard how important it was to have a retreat center where academic symposia could be, and I've been to plenty of academic retreats, and I fully agree that that's a wonderful thing. But if it's a retreat center, then put it in a more secluded place. They could put it on, at Vassar Farms, on Hooker Avenue. They could put it on a corner of campus up by the observatory that's secluded. But we heard from the leader of the business district that one of the advantages of this project is all the foot traffic it's going to bring to the business district. Well, a real retreat center like Omega up in Reinbeck has cells that it's a secluded place where you spend your time right there. And if that's true, then it's not really going to be so integral to the business district. I will also affirm what we've heard earlier, that Vassar already has a profit-making enterprise in the Alumni House. Having written the checks to the Alumni House for our wedding party, I can tell you that they're doing very well with that. And if that's the nature of the enterprise... And if that's the nature of the enterprise, then I think the zoning board and the other governmental bodies should subject it to the same scrutiny that they would put on any other commercial enterprise, what is the impact on the neighbors? We heard earlier this evening, people saying, hey, wait a minute, you put up a house right next to my house, it's going to have an impact on me, and if you change the zoning, that's affects the property that we purchased and the nature of the community. Vassar College has done no outreach to the neighbors, you know, the wooded property that's behind, next to our house will become a parking lot. I think all of you would understand that that's objectionable to us, but what's even more objectionable is that they're talking about different things to different audiences, and if they really want a retreat center, they could put it in a secluded area, if they want a, something integrated with the Business District, put it in the Business District, if they want something that's going to help them interact with the neighbors, then work with the neighbors to have a plan that they don't object to, which fundamentally changes the, the nature of our neighborhood, which is where our children play, where people walk, where people bike, where the farmer's market is, and to have a commercial property in the middle of that changes a lot of things. You can't change just one thing in the ecology of built space. So this doesn't have anything to do with hot-button issues like sexual assault, or the need for retreats. This has to do with changing the nature of a neighborhood and putting a profit-seeking enterprise in the middle of what is otherwise a quiet, community-gathering space where the new In will be entirely out of character. Thank you for your attention to this, I appreciate the three minutes.
Thank you. Are there any, anyone else that wants to speak? All right, I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any of the comments that they made.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
You have more than three minutes.
I would just note, first of all, that this property is currently zoned Institutional District, where the stated purpose is to foster the continued and expanded uses of the colleges and the other schools that are on these parcels.
I'm going to ask the, for no more comments from, from the audience until, unless and
until you have an opportunity to come up again.
The submission that this would open a Pandora's Box is inaccurate. Our submission is that this hotel, restaurant, conference center cohesive use is, just as to repeat, a cohesive use that is fundamental to the educate, that is tied to the educational use. It is not for any other educational, I'm sorry, any other use in the Institutional District beyond education, we are talking about tying it to the educational use. This will not allow every single parcel in the Institutional District to put forward a conference center. The college is not obligated under the law to prove a need for the expansion. We do not need to show where we're holding any conferences, whether or not we would like to make those conferences, where we can invite larger groups to attend those conferences. That is not an obligation that the college has to prove to this board. What, the statement about that we should be held to the same commercial standards, the fact of the matter is, New York State law favors educational uses, and if there's a reasonable relationship to the educational purpose, it will generally be upheld. There was a consistent message throughout the public comments this evening, that members of the public are attending events at Vassar, so the fact that there is some use by the public should not deter this board from finding that a conference center with these additional components is not an educational use. Furthermore, I note, this board did acknowledge, but I will repeat for the record, that this board is not to determine whether or not the current location is appropriate. If you feel that this is an educational use, that is the determination. It is not, it's an educational use, but it should be somewhere else. The college has submitted, a lengthy submission to the planning board outlining why this location was selected, why other locations are not suiting their needs, and it is for the planning board to render that. And to date, there has not been a, my understanding, a pushback currently on the position, though I understand perhaps the planning board has not formally voted yet, but the client is on the understanding that, given concessions made to relocate this structure, to save 70 percent of the lawn that the location, will proceed forward. We have, I would just, some of the comments we will address in writing, but we never use the phrase retreat. We're not looking to hide in the back corner. Typically, the more public uses of the college do tend to be on your more outward edges. The golf course is 80 percent used by the public, that is on the outer edge. The daycare center, I believe, has a direct path, I'm not sure exactly what that is, I know I've walked by that a number of times. We do want to encourage visitors to the conference center to go to our businesses in Arlington. We want to encourage them to visit the shops and see what the town of Poughkeepsie has to offer. But we're not looking to be, this is not a retreat, this is an educational conference center. I don't believe that addresses all the comments, but I believe that hits the point. The only thing I will say is, again, we are not looking to just put up rental rooms and stand alone, like you would typically think of a hotel. If the conference center was not part of this, we would not, the rooms would not be proposed, it is the rooms with the conference center. It is a integral cohesive proposal. And again, I will note for the ZBA that simply because there may be another proposal somewhere else should not sway this determination, we have no control over that other entity, we have no relationship with that. I would also note that the college has gone on record that this likely will not be something that will be profitable to the college. Again, while that is not part of this board's determination, there seems to be this belief that this is a commercial enterprise, that the college wants to do to line its pockets. That is completely not true. This likely will not be a significantly profitable enterprise, but the college wants to foster these educational events and have these accommodations available for those attending them. They believe in that mission so strongly.
Would you like to add anything?
I don't think there's really much to add. I would just reiterate that our purpose here today is to show and to demonstrate that the Institute and In aligns with the educational, and furthers the educational mission of the college. I think that was shown by our comments, as well as the opponents to the particular project. That is what our purpose was today. I would just add one thing, and that is, the college is well aware that other hotels, then not only Arthur S. May, but other hotels as well, are going up in the area, and the point is that this is not simply a place to spend the night. If all we needed was a place to spend the night, then any of those hotels would suffice. The purpose, as has just been pointed out, is to collect multiple functions in one location, and the border of the campus provides us with that porous location in which we are, between the community and the campus itself, in which we can both bring people in from our own community, as well as the external community, to convene in a particular location like that.
I have a couple of questions, then. Can you tell me, the conference center itself, would that be available for any outside agencies, or is it solely for the, for the college?
Yes, it will be available for rental, if not otherwise to use by the college.
Okay. And, anyone else have any questions?
Just to, sorry, can I clarify just one, one aspect to that, and maybe it will help in understanding it. As we're thinking about forming the Institute for the Liberal Arts, we are imagining, and we're in the process of articulating what the role of a faculty director would be, as well as a program director for that institute. And so, a series of programming efforts coming from the college will be planned for X number, we don't know yet, because we haven't gotten to that point yet, for X number of days of the year. Once we've done that, then the space becomes available for others to use.
Any questions? All right, I, I'm interested in developing a little bit further the concepts of customary usage and established uses, so you talked earlier about you had a list of schools that you wanted to, to get together. I'd like to adjourn the meeting to get some more information, if nobody has any objection to that, and if the applicant doesn't really have an objection to it.
No, we are not going to object to that.
Okay.
Will it be to your first, your January meeting?
Of 20?
Of 2020, yes.
Yeah, I think, I see. So I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the, what is the January? 13th of 2020?
Second half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recusal.
And, given that you've already voted on that, there will be no discussion portion during the second half of the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just for anyone in the audience, I'd like to give you Sonia's, who is our secretary, her email address, so that anyone who said they wanted to submit their comments in writing afterwards can do so. Her last name is Ja, her first name is Sonia, her last name is James, J.A.M.E.S., so the email address is sjames@townofpoughkeepsie-ny.gov, and I believe you can find that on the website as well.
You can, yes. Okay, so anyone, anyone need a break? Okay, then we'll have a short recess. Thank you all for coming. Here you go. It's off in minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's bring the meeting back to order. We've completed the public hearings for the five items, so we'll return to the top of the agenda. For item number one, this is the South Road crossings. Twenty-six eleven, twenty-six twenty-nine, South Road. At our last meeting, we approved the three, three of the seven variances that the, included in the application. And so tonight, we have to consider items number four through seven. This is, includes an additional wall sign on the north side of building one. Five, an additional wall sign on the south side of building one. Six, an additional wall sign on the north side of building two. And seven, an additional wall sign on the south side of building two. The planning board has issued a negative declaration on this application, so we don't have to do anything. The county, as I mentioned earlier, has reviewed this and recommends that the four variances were considering tonight be rejected. Okay. Okay, comments from the board? They have modified the application, reducing the size of the four wall signs from ninety-nine square feet to seventy-five square feet.
I think I'm more concerned with the permissible signs and their impact on the environment, so I think that they did reduce the additional size. I don't think it'll have that much of an effect on the environment. So I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I agree, I'm good with it. They did what we asked. I mean, they were, you know, they were good enough to come back with a better proposal. It's gonna be nice to see this property, you know, come back to life, if you will.
That goes without saying, yeah.
We only hope that, you know, they, they do what they promised us.
Yeah. Folks.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the new proposal. I, I do think there's some, even though the, the eastward facing signs are, you know, maxed out, that's, I don't think that's gonna be the, the sign that's gonna draw the attention because by the time you're there, you're on your way past. I think the north and south facing signs are very important to whatever business goes in there. Hopefully, if it's gonna be the kind of business that's gonna be bringing the kind of traffic in that's gonna make that a successful project, then I'm sure they're gonna need a little bit of that extra square footage to make it work.
Okay. I agree with Tony, I'm okay with it. Okay.
I don't understand the need for the north and the south sign because they're also gonna have a monument sign that they're entitled to. There's gonna be signage on the monument sign, so it's kind of a mystery to me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still troubled by just the number of signs. I mean, six signs on two buildings.
Six signs on two buildings, but there's, there's, there's four businesses.
That, that, for me, is clearly a mitigating circumstance, and also the fact that they're leaving the trees.
Yes.
Which I think is important, and...
It's gonna hurt them a little bit in the summer.
Yeah, and, but I'm, I'm, I'm actually willing to trade a couple signs for some trees. And, so...
And if their renderings are accurate, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna take away from the character of the area.
Okay. All right, so are we pretty much agreed? Okay. I, for the findings, I would recommend that we adopt the findings that are in the staff report, which I think anticipated the discussion we would have, and I think explained it pretty well. Okay, Christine, you wanna?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair and in the staff report. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
I think so. Second, then. Okay, motion to approve the application in item number one.
Sonia, who are you calling the second?
It's a tie. We get half, fifty-fifty.
We'll give it to Art.
Paul beat me, Paul beat me.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Recusals? Okay, approved, six, one. Item number two, Frank Orlando, ninety-nine Ray Boulevard. This is a variance to allow a carport. Variance to allow a carport to be three point six feet from the north side lot line where twenty feet is required. This is a type-two action, so there's no environmental determination. And I would just note that in the agenda, we just need to amend it. It's, it's not a replacement. And the carport is located on the, from the north side lot line. Okay, so just, those are just two minor typos. Okay, any discussion on this?
It's apparently been there for quite some time. I don't think it's been there since nineteen fifty-one, but...
Aye.
I checked this on parcel access, and they've got, the house and the carport being built at the same time, so...
And the cars at fifty-five.
Okay. Okay. For this one, I, I move as findings the following. The board finds that there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor will there be a detriment to nearby properties. The board notes that the carport has been in existence since nineteen fifty-five, so there's, there's no change that's going to be affected by this variance, simply makes legal a long-existing structure. Two, the board finds that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method. The only recourse would be to demolish the carport and construct either a carport or garage in some other location, which would be prohibitively expensive. The board finds that the area request is substantial in the sense that it's a little over three feet from the property line. On the other hand, there's no evidence that the existing carport has created any difficulties. Four, the board finds that the proposed variance will have no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the, in the neighborhood, simply because it's been there and will remain. And five, the board finds that the difficulty is self-created largely because the applicant many, many years ago failed to complete the building permit process, but this does not preclude the granting of the variance. So I move those as findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Paul, you wanna do the honors on this one?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. It's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving the variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair and in the staff report. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
I think so. Second, then.
Okay, motion to approve the application in item number one.
Sonia, who are you calling the second?
It's a tie. We get half, fifty-fifty.
We'll give it to Art.
Paul beat me, Paul beat me.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Recusals? Okay, approved, six, one. Item number two, Frank Orlando, ninety-nine Ray Boulevard. This is a variance to allow a carport. Variance to allow a carport to be three point six feet from the north side lot line where twenty feet is required. This is a type-two action, so there's no environmental determination. And I would just note that in the agenda, we just need to amend it. It's, it's not a replacement. And the carport is located on the, from the north side lot line. Okay, so just, those are just two minor typos. Okay, any discussion on this?
It's apparently been there for quite some time. I don't think it's been there since nineteen fifty-one, but...
Aye.
I checked this on parcel access, and they've got, the, the house and the carport being built at the same time, so...
And the cars at fifty-five.
Okay. Okay. For this one, I, I move as findings the, the following. The board finds that there will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor will there be a detriment to nearby properties. The board notes that the carport has been in existence since nineteen fifty-five, so there's, there's no change that's going to be affected by this variance, simply makes legal a long-existing structure. Two, the board finds that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method. The only recourse would be to demolish the carport and construct either a carport or a garage in some other location, which would be prohibitively expensive. The board finds that the area request is substantial in the sense that it's a little over three feet from the property line. On the other hand, there's no evidence that the existing carport has created any difficulties. Four, the board finds that the proposed variance will have no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the, in the neighborhood, simply because it's been there and will remain. And five, the board finds that the difficulty is self-created largely because the applicant many, many years ago failed to complete the building permit process, but this does not preclude the granting of the variance. So I move those as findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Paul, you wanna do the honors on this one?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. It's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving the variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, adopted. Item number three, Michael Novradsky, Nine Stride Avenue. This is a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment in a single-family residence. Okay, this is an unlisted action, so, and there's a short form EAF that's been included. So I move that the ZBA declare itself as lead agency for the purpose of reviewing the application in item number three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I further move that the board finds that the action proposed in item number three, based on the information included in the EAF short form, will make, will have no significant impact on the environment. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think there's a, there's a whole laundry list of items that we need to go through for a special use permit, and I have that in front of me, so I think I will just go ahead and do this motion. Okay, I moved, I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number three. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the code. And as findings for this are as, as follows. Under the general provisions for a site use permit, the ZBA shall take into account the public health, safety, and welfare, and shall assure itself of the following. One, that there should be no detrimental effect by the establishment of use on other uses within the district. The board finds that the proposed change will occur entirely interior to the existing structure and will have no effect on anything else in the neighborhood. B, that such a use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district. The board finds, once again, that because this is an, a creation of an interior apartment, this will have no impact on the development of the area or of the, of the appropriate development of adjacent lands. Three, the board finds that all structures, equipment, and materials shall be reasonably accessible for fire and police protection. The board has termed this on basis of site visits and the plans submitted. And four, that the use meets the prescribed requirements for the district in which it's located, including minimum yard requirements, maximum height, off-street parking, and signed regulations. The board finds, once again, that because this is an interior modification, the, there will be no change in the external structure or the footprint. Okay. For the special use permit performance standards, many, many of these are, don't apply to an accessory apartment, but some, some do. One, noise. The current code standards will continue to apply to this location. Two, discharge of water. The current house is on the municipal sewer. Three, traffic access. The structure is located on a, a public street with an adequate driveway. Four, parking. Again, there's adequate space in the existing driveway, and, and there's also a garage. Five, interior circulation does not apply. Six, landscape and screening. The, the existing landscaping will remain exactly as it is, and there's no new structures to be screened. Seven, the character and appearance of the buildings and structures in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. Again, the board finds that there will be no exterior change and thus no impact on the neighborhood. And historic and natural resources does not apply. Sewer treatment and water supply, these are both provided by municipal utilities. The size and scale, the proposed change will have no impact on the current structure, and this is also true for nine eleven, on the, the location of buildings and fences. And twelve, additional safeguards and conditions. Because this is an interior accessory apartment, there are no additional conditions that need to be applied. And finally, the criteria specifically for a, the accessory apartment. One, the apartment shall be clearly subordinate to the one-family dwelling. The board finds that the size and location of the proposed apartment is clearly subordinate to the existing family, one-family dwelling. Two, the number of bedrooms shall be not more than one, this is satisfied. Three, the floor area of the apartment shall be greater than four, four hundred square feet. The board has determined that the apartment will be approximately six hundred and eighty square feet. Four, the floor area devoted to the apartment shall not exceed thirty-five percent of the existing floor area. The board finds this is satisfied. The apartment and the one-family dwelling must have safe and proper means of entrance. This already exists for the one-family dwelling, and the entrance and exit for the apartment will be at grade level in the rear of the building. Let's see, six, it's a municipal water. Seven, it's a municipal sewer system. There's, so eight does not apply. Nine, let's see, again, this does not apply because it doesn't need a zoning plan, or a planning board site review. Ten, there are no stairways leading above the first floor since it's a on-grade basement access. Eleven, the board finds that there is adequate off-street parking. Twelve, let's see, the apartment is not currently in existence, so that doesn't apply. Thirteen, the zoning board of appeals will provide copies of the act, the application to the building inspector, the fire inspector, the town assessor, and the health department. Fourteen, the provisions of the New York State Fire Code will apply. Fifteen, any exterior changes in the single-family dwelling shall conform to this, there will be no exterior changes, so that does not apply. Sixteen, continued compliance with these regulations is required. Failure to do so will result in the revocation of the special use permit. Seventeen, the apartment shall be inspected by the building and fire inspectors and the zoning administrator every two years. So with those as the findings and the satisfaction of the criteria, I move that the ZBA approve the special use permit request in item number three.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, item three is adopted. Item number four, Guido Capolino, six fifty-five Vassar Road. This is a variance to allow the subdivision of an existing lot into two lots, one of which would have an area of thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven square feet, where forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet is required. This is an unlisted action, and, but there is an EAF short form attached, so I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purpose of the environmental review of item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I move that the ZBA finds, based on the information in the attached EAF short form, that the action proposed in item number four will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, on the, on the application, comments?
There was a neighbor that was concerned about the proximity to his property, but it, it satisfies the side yard lot setback, so I don't believe that that's a consideration or concern for us. Additionally, I think their testimony was that topog- topographically, it's, it's lower down, it's just a one-story building.
Yeah.
So I don't think the impact is gonna be necessarily that great.
And I also note, I took a quick look on the parcel access, whatever that's worth. Both neighbors could plant trees in their own backyard.
The county didn't have any impact, or response?
Some divisions dropped over the county.
No? Okay.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, okay. Okay. I was kinda wondering about that because it's Vassar Road.
Okay, all right, bye. Okay, so I think we're, we're all okay with this? Okay, all right, you wanna do the honors?
Yep. I move that the board approve the request for an area, area variance set forth in item four.
Do we need findings?
Pardon?
We don't need findings, do you?
I, I would suggest that we use the findings that the applicant has provided, they're pretty detailed. I mean, do...
Sure, and I think the only thing we might want to add is that we did have the discussion with the town about the sewer. The reason that you're not supposed to have the smaller lot is so that you have sample room, ample room for septic, and the town officials confirmed that we do have ample room for septic. That's really the only thing I would add.
Okay, so why don't you just add that, to say we're gonna adopt the findings submitted by the applicant? I, I would suggest that we use the findings that the applicant has provided, they're pretty detailed. I mean, I, do...
Sure, and I think the only thing we might wanna add is that we did have the discussion with the town about the sewer. The reason that you're not supposed to have the smaller lot is so that you have sample room, ample room for septic, and the town officials confirmed that we do have ample room for septic. That's really the only thing I would add.
Okay, so why don't you just add that, to say we're gonna adopt the findings submitted by the applicant?
Okay.
And the board's determination that...
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair as well as by the applicant.
No good?
That's fair. So, you got the applicant part in.
So moved. Yeah. Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance request in item number four. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Okay, approved, seven, zero. Okay. And item number five has been adjourned, okay. There is one more item that, that just came in. This is a request from the Poughkeepsie Town Board to serve as the lead agency for the environmental review of the Hudson Heritage redevelopment project.
Just give you the two minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, the applicant is asking for several different town board actions. One relates to the creation of a sewer district, there's some small zoning changes that are proposed, and a small change to the town code where it applies to the economic incentives section. In any case, the town board is, was the lead agency for, throughout the process with Hudson Heritage. They're recirculating now, just to reaffirm that they are the lead agency, and you would have the option to object if you so choose, but there's really no reason it's gonna come to you, so, I think, no reason to.
All right, anybody have any more questions? Okay, I move that the ZBA approve the request from the Town of Poughkeepsie Town Board, that it serve, that the town board serve as the lead agency for the seeker review of the Hudson Heritage redevelopment project.
Second to that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. All right, that, I think, does bring us to the end of the agenda. I think, all I would wanna say is I wish everybody a happy and healthy holidays, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.